meeting this May 23, 2023. I'm pleased that tonight we have Pastor Dexter Hardy of LifePoint Church. He will be providing our invocation, and that will be followed by the pledge brought by firefighter Elliot Bedell of Station 16A shift. For those of you who are willing and able, please stand for our invocation and pledge.
Will you please bow with me? Dear God and Father, we thank you for this day you've given us, Lord. Father, I ask your blessing on this meeting that it would be productive and honoring to you. Father, I pray that you would provide guidance and wisdom in all the matters that would be discussed tonight, that, dear God, everything would be done in a way that'd be beneficial to the citizens of Marietta, Lord. Father, we thank you for all that you're doing in Cobb County and throughout Cobb County, Lord. Father, I pray for the leadership here. I pray, oh, God, that you would give them insight and guidance. May you be glorified through this time together. It's in your Son, Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor, and thank you also firefighter Bedell. Our meeting is now called to order. Before we dive into today's presentations, there are a number of agenda items, commissioners, for us to add to the agenda, and I move that we approve the addition of the following items. The first is to present a proclamation designating May as Mental Health Awareness Month in Cobb County. The second is to present a proclamation designating May as Foster Care Awareness Month in Cobb County. And the third is to present certificates of achievement to the East Marietta 17 and Underboys basketball team. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion? Call the question. The motion passes for zero with Commissioner Burrow being absent. Commissioners, I also move that we approve a non-agenda item to the consent agenda pertaining to the settlement of a workers' compensation claim on behalf of James Ronald Puckett.
Second.
All right. Is there any discussion?
If I could just ask the clerk to record my statement, and this is on page 66 of the current agenda. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Any other discussion? Call the question. The motion carries four zero. Thank you. Now we'll go into our presentations, and the first one is to present recognition to Takari Tatum. If you are here, please join us up front. This is so sweet. Okay. Takari. Oh. Look at that there. That's getting all of the attention right now. But Takari Tatum is 11 years old and a fifth grade student at Varna Elementary School in Powder Springs. As part of a community service project, he chose to focus on mental health. After the death of two family members, he published a book, he published a picture book discussing how he dealt with the mental stress and created rubber band bracelets to help people take a moment to calm themselves. He has since raised more than $1,000 for the National Alliance for Mental Illness, yes? And get this, and distributed more than 10,000 of his bracelets across 10 states. We, the Cobb County, yes. We, the Cobb County Board of Commissioners, do hereby salute the efforts of Takari Tatum to offer relief to those suffering through stress and mental health issues. His work at such a young age is an inspiration to all and will impact our community for decades to come. You can tell he's accustomed to being on the speaking circuit. I asked him, I said, "You want to say a few words?" He said, "Yeah."
I would like to thank everybody in this room, especially my loving family, my grandma, my father, and most importantly, my teacher, Ms. Lori Mendenol, for helping me get this through the beginning.
Thank you. So, yeah, yeah, welcome. So, this is awesome. So, I think it was last year I saw him on the news, and at that point, he had just created the rubber band bracelets. So then I received a text message from the chair, and she's like, "Hey, do you know about this kid?" And that's when I realized and discovered that you wrote a book. And it was very impressive. I actually met him and his teachers at the school on Friday. Was it Friday? Yeah, and we did an interview, but you instead decided to play Gail King today? If I had to preempt, be preempted by anybody, it would be Oprah's best friend, so that's quite all right. That's quite all right. The family, you guys can come up, and we can take some pictures.
All right. Yes, stamp it, everybody. Here we go. Gotcha. Thanks.
Family, you should be proud, and teacher. Okay, thank you. Okay, our next presentation will be to present a proclamation designating May 21 through 27 as National Public Works Week in Cobb County. Those who are here as part of this presentation can please join me up front. Oh, wow. I see. You got a crew. Hey. We have quite a crew up here as we celebrate Public Works Week, May 21 through the 27th. Public work services support infrastructure and facilities such as transportation, water supply, water treatment, solid waste, and public buildings that are vital to the lives of Cobb County residents and visitors. These services would not exist without the dedication of Cobb's engineers, our managers, and employees at all levels. We, the Cobb County Board of Commissioners, hereby recognize the week of May 21 through the 27th as National Public Works Week, and we call upon the community to join us in recognizing their contributions that all our public works providers provide every day for our health, safety, and quality of life. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Chairwoman. Drew Wrestler with Cobb County Department of Transportation. Just want to recognize the small number of employees here. There are many more that are getting ready to wake up at 5:00 in the morning to begin the important work of maintaining and operating the public infrastructure. So, we have representatives here from parks, water, solid waste, and beautification, property management, fleet, DOT. I hope I didn't miss anybody. But these employees take care of the public, take care of the other departments of public safety, and all the other important things that the county does. The work that these folks do is foundational to all of those services, and I'm so glad to be able to work alongside you all and really be able to see the great work that happens. Miles and miles of roadways, of water lines, parks, traffic signals, buildings, vehicles, all important to the critical services provided by the county every day.
Any other remarks? Okay. Well, this is for you. We'll also go for a photo.
Water, DOT, and MIBL, come on.
Michael?
All right, we can make this work. Here we go. Three, two, one, and done. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you all. Appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you, yeah. Appreciate it. Thank you for all you do. All right, hey. Thank you. You're welcome. Thank you. Likewise. Good seeing you. Okay, next, we will recognize the Youth Commission graduating class of two thousand and twenty-three. I am extremely excited about this group of young men and women that you see standing in front of you. They are our twenty-twenty-three graduating class of youth commissioners here, representing schools all across Cobb County. They embarked on a mission to learn about Cobb County government, the services that we provide, to help them be better versed in the things that we do, and to help them become leaders in our community. But as I listened to them speak at our program before tonight, the best thing that I learned about this class that they learned is about each other. And in recognizing that we're all different people across the county, but we're all called to serve everyone and make sure that no one is left behind, and I was truly touched by that, and I hope that that continues to be a part of you, no matter what you do. And we hope that you will continue to be a part of Cobb County as an active student, but also that this is a place that you perhaps consider staying beyond schools. We'd love to have this caliber of leadership be here to lead our county for the many years to come. You certainly have given us a lot of hope with your participation. So with that, I'm going to read the certificate, and we're going to hand them out to each of our students. Parents, you don't have to be shy and stand where you are. You can feel free to come right up front so you can get a good picture of your child. Our certificates read, "Congratulations on your graduation from the twenty-two, twenty-two three class of Cobb Youth Commission. We look forward to your continued participation in community affairs and ongoing excellence in the future. This the twenty-third day of May twenty-twenty-three." Congratulations. So, in alphabetical order, we're going to recognize Olivia Barrow. Congratulations. We have Cameron Berry. Cameron. There you go. Emma Bayer. Congratulations. Nasir Blake. Congratulations. Ben Childs. Believe he wasn't here. All right. Ayesha Dev. All right. Olivia Edwards. All right, here you go. Congratulations. Xavier Goggins. All right, congratulations. Arshia Gunjal. Congratulations. Venya Gunjal. Cameron Hilker. Dylan Holly. Tate Johnson. He is the son of a proud Bill Johnson back in the room. We could clap for that, too. Simron Kamra. All right. Naomi Linton. Hey, not here? Oh, okay. Jelissa Martinez. Emery McCurdy. Jamie Morrison. You're welcome. Driti Nai. Jordan Reddick. Kayden Rogers. Congratulations. Eliza Syfy. Maya Varani. Brianna Webster. And last but not least, Lauren Williams. Congratulations. Congratulations to our youth commission. They've done a great job, a great job over the past year. All right, guys, if we can get everyone to squeeze in together with less tall in front and more tall in the back. Certainly need to recognize Brittany with Cobb Extension and Janine in my office. They've done a fantastic job in coordinating this program.
Here we go. Smile. Read. Two, one, done.
All right, thank you. All right. Hold on, guys. Say some prayers, please. All right, thank you, guys. Appreciate it. Okay, our next presentation will be to recognize Georgia Public Health Association Award recipients. Those who are here, matter of fact, why don't we wait for our youth commissioners to exit? All righty.
Thank you, commissioners. I appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight. I'm Lisa Crossman. I'm deputy director for Cobb and Douglas Public Health. This is a fun meeting tonight with all of the celebration. It's good to be here for that. We always want you to be proud of your public health folks and your other health, community health leaders. And so I wanted to bring your attention that recently at the Georgia Public Health Association Annual Conference that was held a couple of weeks ago, several of our Cobb County leaders were recognized for their outstanding effort to improve the health of our community, both locally and across the state. The following individuals were recognized, and if we can have them come up and get a picture with you at the end of everybody together. So first of all, the Sellers-McCrone Award is one of our truly most prestigious state public health awards and recognizes outstanding service to Georgians in the field of epidemiology and laboratory service. We were so proud to have Dr. Christopher Gullidge, our Cobb County Medical Examiner, Rachel Franklin, our chief epidemiologist for Cobb and Douglas Public Health, and Savannah Harden, one of our epidemiologists at Cobb and Douglas Public Health, that were recognized and received this award this year. So, congratulations to them. I'll keep going if I can, because there were a few, and so this was exciting. So again, this year, we had the Administration Outstanding Service Award is given to an individual who demonstrates exceptional public service by enhancing the fiscal and administrative areas to support public health. Ms. Valerie Prince, our administrator and chief financial officer, was the recipient of that award. I'm not sure if Valerie is here tonight, but we wanted to recognize her. The Ruth B. Freeman Nursing Award for Population Health, it recognizes an outstanding public health nurse who uses credible data and national best practices to deliver exceptional public health interventions. Pepla Coliva, one of our nurse practitioners at Cobb and Douglas Public Health, was the recipient of that award. The Al Dohany Outstanding Community Service Award recognizes an individual who made contributions to public health through collaboration with community and its leaders. I was humbled to receive that award. And last but certainly not least, the Fred Agel Award for Public Health Governance recognizes a board of health member or elected official in Georgia for outstanding commitment and service in the promotion of public health. And I'm pleased to let you know that Chairwoman Lisa Cupid was the recipient of that award. I have your award for you. I know that you weren't able to join us at the public health conference because you had some more pressing county business at that time, so we wanted to recognize you publicly with this award. Absolutely. So, if we can get a picture with everybody here, can we do that?
Absolutely.
Do you want to keep going? Okay. So, again, in celebration, I love coming and giving good news instead of issues about outbreaks and stuff like that. So, also, tonight, we wanted to share our excitement for the end of the pandemic state of emergency. You can all do a collective sigh and applause. It has been a long three years for everyone in our community, and we want to thank the commissioners, the county staff, our healthcare providers across the county, and truly every one of our residents for all of the work and care that they've given to help our community get through this pandemic. I think we have a proclamation that you all were going to consider or read.
Yes, we do. All right. "After the 2020 declaration of the COVID pandemic as a global and national health emergency..." Let me reread this. Anticipating. All right, we're going to back up to the beginning. "On January third, 2020, the World Health Organization first declared COVID-19 as a global health emergency. And on March thirteenth, the U.S. federal government declared a national state of emergency. Whereas since then, more than a hundred million COVID-19 cases has been reported in the U.S., and more than one million U.S. residents have lost their lives. Cobb has seen more than two hundred and eighteen thousand confirmed and probable cases of COVID-19 during the pandemic, and more than two thousand residents lost their lives due to COVID, leaving an irreparable hole in our families and community. And whereas healthcare and essential workers displayed an unwavering dedication to health, safety, and well-being of Cobb County residents, residents showed compassion and solidarity to ensure neighbors had their basic needs met while the pandemic caused illness, claimed lives, induced untold stress, and severely disrupted work. And whereas after three challenging years, the World Health Organization officially declared an end to COVID-19 as a public health emergency on May fifth, 2023. Since the last Omicron variant surge in early 2022, the number of new cases, hospitalizations, and deaths has dramatically decreased by eighty to ninety-two percent nationwide. Therefore, we, the Cobb County Board of Commissioners, do hereby commemorate the lives impacted by COVID-19 in our community, and we honor the public health system. We honor their workers, healthcare workers, public safety workers, our businesses, schools, community organizations, for helping Cobb County residents persevere in the face of the crisis and navigate the adversity of the COVID-19 pandemic. This the twenty-third day of May 2023. And this is for you, Lisa." Thank you. Yes, we got through it. Yes. They're going to have a picture for you right here?
I did want to follow up on the proclamation tonight and just let you, let our residents know that many providers, including public health, will continue to provide free COVID tests, vaccinations, treatment, as long as the federal resources are still in existence. They just will not be at the scope of what we had at the height of the pandemic. But many residents may still want to access some of these services, and those are still available through many of our healthcare providers. We also, I would not be doing my public health service if I didn't also add, please, we want to encourage residents that 2023 is the year to catch back up on all of your preventative healthcare screenings. During the pandemic, many people had delayed their regular medical and dental checkups, their colonoscopies, their mammograms, all of those things that we encourage people to do on a regular basis to maintain their good health. And so we would like to encourage our residents to make 2023 the year that you catch up on that and link with your primary care providers and follow up on the general recommendations for your health. Thank you very much.
Okay. Our next proclamation will be to designate May as Mental Health Awareness Month. Thank you. Hey, how are you guys? I am presenting, presenting this to you on behalf of my colleague, Commissioner Burl, who's out today. But Mental Health Month, May is Mental Health Awareness Month, a time to fight stigma, provide support, educate the public, and advocate for policies that support the millions of people in the U.S. affected by mental illness. Some staggering stats. Two in five adults report anxiety and depression. Two in five teens describe experiencing persistent sadness or hopelessness exasperated by social media, bullying, and gun violence. Suicide is the second-leading cause of death among young people. All people with mental health conditions deserve appropriate and accessible services. With effective treatment, they can recover and lead full and productive lives. We encourage everyone to increase awareness and understanding of mental health conditions and take steps to join in activities and take action to strengthen the mental health of our community. We, the Cobb County Board of Commissioners, do hereby recognize May as Mental Health Month in Cobb. We call upon residents, government agencies, private businesses, nonprofit organizations, and other groups to join in activities and take action to strengthen the mental health of our community. This the twenty-third day of May 2023."
I want to thank all of our partners, nonprofits, certainly Cobb County Government. We have partnered on town halls, communications, a great video that Ross put together, our law enforcement, our first responders, and so many others to help raise awareness, promote resiliency, and reduce stigma around mental health. I mean, mental health impacts so many of us, right? And with the staggering numbers of our youth and teens and young adults experiencing anxiety and depression, as the mother of two young- and depression, as the mother of two young adults myself, you know, I see them and I feel for them. So we encourage everybody to embrace your health, take care of yourself, and, you know, remember that there is no health without mental health.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Our next proclamation will be to designate May as Foster Care Awareness Month.
As those that are coming up to celebrate May as Foster Care Awareness Month, it was quite humbling. We did a research to find out what color was associated with foster care, because we know yellow is associated with mental health, and it's actually the blue, so thank you. But what was more humbling was this, this fact that we found. Did you know that foster children usually move from home to home with only trash bags for clothes? It is so prevalent that it has become the unofficial symbol of the foster crisis. So with that, it's great pleasure to give this proclamation to you. Whereas more than 391,000 American children and youth living in foster care deserve to grow up in safe and loving homes devoted to their health, happiness, and advancement. Whereas children and youth in foster care often face lasting physical and emotional scars from trauma, which can increase their risk of mental health and behavioral health issues, substance abuse, and depression. Whereas in recognizing foster care awareness, we express our gratitude to every loving foster parent in America, and we acknowledge every young person navigating the child welfare system unsure of what the future might hold. Therefore, we, the Cobb County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim the month of May Foster Care Awareness Month in Cobb County and commend Georgia Division of Family and Children's Services for its unwavering commitment to helping better the lives of children and youth in foster care. This the 23rd day of May 2023.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Gamble and all of our county commissioners for your support. I just want to acknowledge my team, part of my team that is up here for the hard work that they do every day to support our kids in foster care. But we could not do half of what we do without the support of the Cobb County community, which has been absolutely phenomenal to our kids. So if anyone is interested in supporting, we can always reach out to our resource coordinator, who is Samantha Hassler, and she will certainly connect you with how you can support our foster youth. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Last but not least, we want to recognize our East Marietta 17 and under boys' basketball team for their winning the Class A State Basketball Championship. Come on down.
So I've got a few notes as they make their way up here. East Marietta took home the state championship title in the recent GRPA State Championships held in Savannah, Georgia. East Marietta advanced to the state tournament by winning the District Five Tournament, and in that district tournament, East Marietta played Paulding County. And that's where they overcame a 17-point deficit to claim the championship. 19! I stand corrected. 19-point deficit. At that state tournament, they played and won their pool play game Friday night, which advanced them to the semifinal game on Saturday. In the semifinal game, they defeated Rockdale County 58-48. Later that day for the state championship game, East Marietta played the city of Savannah and won a close game of 88 to 84. Congratulations on a great tournament. Give it up. So we've got here with us four of the players, but as I say the names, please raise your hand so everybody can clap for you, and then I'll read, I'll let you make any comments you want to make. So we've got Coach Ken White, Coach Clark Humble, Ian Buchanan, Charles Connor, Lucas Elmiger... There we go. Here we go. Peter Fink, William Hayden, Cooper Long, Sam Northington, Austin Sealy, Nicholas Truen, and Jason Vargese. All right. So congratulations, and certainly, any commentary? One person. One person. You want to say, there we go.
Sure, why not? Well, it took me 50 years to do this, because this is my 50th year in East Marietta basketball. I've been to Savannah nine times, and this is the first time we've won it finally. And all the others, the seven times, we came in second to Savannah, and we beat three Savannah teams, or two, three Savannah teams this year, so. And beat Rockdale County, so. But thank you for the proclamation, for sure. We had, we have a lot of seniors graduating and got all kinds of activities this week, so that's the way it goes sometimes.
Well, hopefully, they can hear our applause from where we're seated. So just so that you all know what these certificates say, it just says, "The Cobb County Board of Commissioners congratulates you for leading your team to win the Georgia Recreation and Parks Association District Five Tournament and State Championship. The East Marietta team overcame Paulding County to claim the district title, then advanced to defeat the city of Savannah, earning the state title. We wish you continued success in your coaching and playing endeavors."
We are now moving into our public hearings, and we have one on the agenda, which is to conduct a public hearing on the proposed Cobb County Strategic Plan.
Good evening, Chairwoman Commissioners, Madam County Manager. We're here for our second public hearing on the strategic plan that Cobb County Government is currently underway of having prepared. We had our first meeting at the last, I mean, had our first public hearing during the last meeting. We started this process back in September. Accenture has been leading the, the meetings with staff, the survey, the, the working sessions, and we've been able to garner over 3,400 survey responses alone. And we're, we're currently boasting over 5,000 actual inputs into the system. So we're, we're very confident that we're getting a good sampling of Cobb County residents. Go ahead, go ahead, next one. We are now at the point where we have our strategic outcome areas as well as our goal statements. These were refined from all of those different points of input with community development, economic development, effective and efficient government, housing, infrastructure, mobility and transportation, and then public safety. Once this second public hearing is closed, we can continue taking input off the website where we currently have the plan or the draft plan posted, but then we will bring it back to the board for approval at a, at a later date. And once this is, this step is complete, the, excuse me, the department managers will then undertake the task of breaking down each one of those goals further into, into action items. So at this time, Madam Chair, we'd ask that you'd open the public hearing.
Thank you, Jimmy. For our public hearing, an unlimited number of speakers may address this topic for a maximum of three minutes, and your comments are to be reserved for the strategic plan only. I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing for any of our speakers.
I'm Donna Court, and I am a resident of Cobb County, and I am here representing myself tonight. But I am a proud resident and on a volunteer advisory board for District Two, Commissioner Jerika Richardson. I am here because I wish to promote the strategic plan. I actually did print it out at, on my home, I saved the paper. It is 38 pages. I encourage everybody here in the room, please look at it, it is well thought out. I did attend on May the 4th, the Chairwoman's State of the County, I'm sorry, Chairwoman Cupid Commissioners and Dr. McMorris and, and, and all the reps here. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I do support the strategic plan, and I will submit a more formal, seven reasons to be proud of Cobb County. This report is professional. The demographics in it were fabulous, showing how, what an educated, empowered community we are. You all have been proficient. You know what you are doing. You all are proactive, you do what you say you're going to do, and you produce, you get results. I love the categories, economic development, community development, infrastructure, housing and livability, transportation and mobility. You all provide the resources and the knowledge for us to decide. You promote inclusion, and you promise that we will all do better. This strategic plan is thoughtful and well researched. The 21st century needs are different from the last century. And I just happened to look at my calendar at the year 2023, we're almost a quarter of the way into this century, so we got to get going. The Chairwoman's State of the County was a prologue of things to come, and I promise that I will assist any of our public servants, any of our commissioners who wish to do good things. So I, I belong to District Two, but I volunteer my services, and there are many people in this room who promise to do good things. And for those who did not get to go, I'm hopeful, Chairwoman, may I submit this to the record for the, with the thing? This is a picture, the All-in Cookies that were presented during the, and I would bring my cookies, but my husband ate both of them. So I support, well, they were long gone that night, he's got the sweet tooth. If you can give us an All-in button, I'm in. I am all in for Cobb County, and may I submit this as evidence? Thank you very much.
My name is Jenny Choate. These are our concerns regarding the proposed strategic plan. Accenture, the consultant hired to do this plan, is a proud member of the World Economic Forum, WEF, quote, "Own nothing and be happy," end quote. Globalist plan to erase our nation's sovereignty to be replaced by the New World Order. Their approach to the work you hired them to do will potentially be slanted in the direction the majority of citizens do not want to go. The Accenture survey was not separated out by the area of the county in which East, the East District of Cobb has different needs than the rest. Those plans are flawed. Therefore, the survey and the strategic plan are flawed. The majority of us moved to Cobb for comparatively low taxes, good schools, single-family homes, suburban neighborhoods, low crime, good public safety, and no MARTA or transit. Yet, from the biased phrasing of the questions in the Accenture survey, results seem to be skewed toward more urban mixed-use developments, rentals, and more transients, infilling our single-family home neighborhoods with affordable multifamily housing and transit, just to give a few examples. Crime will potentially rise, and with more renters who are transient rather than more stable owner-occupied homes, potentially the schools will suffer, taxes will go up, and crime will increase. And last but not least, the recommended plan should be clearly posted on the county website with plenty of time for public review and feedback before your vote on this proposed plan. Vote no to the strategic plan. Thank you.
Good evening, Cobb County Commissioners and Chairwoman Cupid. I'm Jeff Jones, I'm a Unitarian Universalist Community Minister. I recently moved to Smyrna. I lived in Marietta from 2010 to 2017, and I am delighted to be back in Cobb County. I come before you this evening as a bus rider and a transit advocate. I got here by bus this evening, and I will get home by bus. As your strategic plan states on page 28, the county is primarily car-dependent. Residents and visitors alike require the use of vehicles to reach employment, healthcare, and food sources. But the reality is that not everyone has the use of a car. As a transit rider, I have met a mother who rode the bus with her two children. She rode the bus because she was on anti-seizure medication and was not driving a car. I've had the pleasure of meeting a man, getting to know a man with a visual impairment. I met an elderly woman who does not drive and yet maintains her independence through public transportation, and I have met many veterans with low income who do not own a car. I come to you this evening as an advocate of an expanded role of transit in Cobb County. I think we all want less congestion on our roads, and we know that cars are a significant contributing factor to climate change. I hope residents of Cobb County will get out of their cars and join me on the bus. And I also want to live in a compassionate Cobb County, a place to live and work and play for those who have cars, and a place to live and work and play for those who do not have cars. As the county considers expanding transit, I hope you will consider new routes. I personally cannot get to the church that I attend on Canton Road, a road which has many employers who would be well-served by a bus route. And I believe there are transit options that are being considered, like BRT, Bus Rapid Transit, which I have ridden in other cities, that will make public transportation run more quickly and more efficiently. To close, I want to give a shout-out for bus operators. Every time I am on the bus, I see them committing acts of kindness for passengers. And I want to give another shout-out for the Transit Advisory Board. I have attended two of their meetings, and I've appreciated their dedication to the breadth and the depth of their meetings as they seek to advise the county on transit matters. I am truly grateful for your time this evening.
Hi, my name's Kevin Pounds. I'm Director of Community Partnerships at Mus Ministries, and probably more importantly for this, I'm also a resident of District One and grew up here in Cobb County. And I want to say thank you to the county staff and the commissioners for the hard work on the strategic plan. It was very thorough. I think it was also very representative of the fact that, you know, Cobb could be a tell of two different communities living in close proximity. I moved back here this past summer because, let's just be honest, Cobb's a great place to raise a family, and it really is. I mean, I think all of... I mean, I think all of us can agree on that, but not all of us have the same experience of the economic successes of Cobb, and I think at Mus we've seen that firsthand. Couple ways we've seen it, pre-pandemic in 2019, there were 300 individuals per night that were laying their head on what we call a Mus-supported pillow. During the pandemic, that rose to 1,500 a night, right? And so some of those were in shelters, some of those were permanent supportive housing, some of those were people we were helping with their rent, and I wish I could say post-pandemic that dropped, right? I checked our stats today before I came here, 1,500 per night still, and we're in May 2023. I think one of the places where I've personally seen that, where it's been most challenging for me, just as a neighbor, and not just professionally but personally, is in the lives of our students. As of today, Cobb County schools will have hit 1,861 homeless students. Marietta City Schools will have hit 562. If you were to include their siblings that aren't in school age, that's going to mean we're going to hit almost 3,000 children that are homeless in our county today, many of them living in motels, couch surfing, some even in cars. And I think that's why pages 21 and 22 of the strategic plan are incredibly important, where it speaks about housing and livability. And we just want to encourage the Commissioners and county staff to focus on those success indicators. Two that stood out were the land banking authority, and just what impact that could have with working with affordable housing providers, just two that come to mind, Coal Street Development and Habitat for Humanity, that can create effective pathways for our economically-challenged families to get in rental homes and affordable housing they can afford to live in and buy. And secondly is the County Homeless Fund. I think that could be a very effective way of just saying, okay, we're in this together as a county. One of the things that I've always was encouraged about growing up here was the sense that my neighbors actually cared about me as a kid, and I think it's safe.
Sir, sir, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but your three minutes are up.
Okay. Can I say one more?
No, I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for this time. My name's Robbie Huck. I walked here, I live a couple blocks away, and I'm not going to use my whole three minutes. I did invest my time to read the whole plan, and I'm going to veer off subject for one moment and say I did attend the State of the County function that Chairwoman Cupid put together for us, and thank you, thank you, reaching out to include everybody, whether you belong to a club or not, and to have access, that is beautiful, and I am on the same path with you, and as I think a lot of people are on the same path. We want to include everybody in all our services, and equal opportunity, but how we get there, we might separate paths, because I believe in economic freedom. And for me, that means the government is really tiny, and that the tax burden is very small, especially right now in this economic environment. I mean, you don't even know how much a half gallon of milk is going to cost when you go to the grocery store. And so for the government to say that we're going to tax you more is scary and inappropriate. And so my, I want to make a request that, and I took the online survey during this process, and I'm pretty sure, and correct me if I'm not remembering it right, that there was no, when asked about what kind of growth do you want to see, there wasn't the option to say, I want to grow my freedom, I want to grow economic freedom. And I think that we need to find out if the citizens of Cobb County want to grow that before we go further with finalizing the strategic plan, because I believe that a lot of people do want to grow their economic freedom. Because when we, when the people, like, on the page where it says effective and efficient government, one of the items is explore and deploy a mix of options to increase financial resources for the county. Unless that exploring is only in private philanthropic funds, that exploring is in the pockets of the working people. And now's not the time to do that. So I ask that, we surveyed the people, the voters of Cobb County, do we want to grow our economic freedom? Thanks for your time, I appreciate it.
Hello, my name is Lynn Walston. I'm a longtime resident of East Cobb, and I am here to, basically to give my, add my support to the five-year strategic plan, including particularly enhanced mobility, connectivity and transit, including enhanced mobility and reduced travel delay goals. It would be nice to also see a goal to increase multimodal usage or cars coming off the road, and that I would be a supporter of that. I, with all the new residents coming to Cobb, I also support the smart density housing plan. We can't continue to build homes without considering smart use of space and affordable middle-income housing. This is not threatened single-family housing, I don't believe, as some have suggested. It will help preserve parks and green space by using smart and efficient.
Ma'am, can we have you speak a little bit closer into the microphone, please?
Oh, you can't hear me?
That's better.
Oh, I can't start over, okay, sorry. Anyway, thank you Commissioners for all your hard work on this very impressive plan. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Debbie Fisher, East Cobb. I really have a couple of statements and a couple of open-ended questions on the strategic plan. It was kind of evident throughout that the concepts were not separated by district, and as we all know, we have a very diverse county. What's needed in South Cobb isn't necessarily needed in East Cobb. So the statistics that were presented to us weren't really clear, where exactly we're recommending all these different areas that we're supposed to develop. I think it's not ready for game time. I think we need to know where we're putting what. I also, throughout reading it, got the impression that this is more of a policy than a guide. And my concern on it being a policy document is, are you strapping future boards with your policy, which I do not believe you can do when there's money attached, and there's a lot of money attached throughout this plan? And so I would like an answer on, is it policy or just a guide? And it's obvious a lot of work went into it, but for $1,005,000, there should have been a lot of work. But I think the work that was left undone was stating what parts of the county would receive what. And with that, I thank you.
My name is Betty Hayden, I'm a Cobb County resident for 21 years. In reading a summary of this five-year plan online, it appears to be the same plan as the previously presented East Cobb cityhood, which East Cobb residents already voted no to transform Cobb County into a city. It appears that the votes of 85% of Cobb County citizens means nothing to this board. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Tyler Bigler, District Three, East Cobb resident. I just have a few notes, I wanted to, and some feedback on the, the plan that I'd like to share. So under sustainable development, there were talks about placemaking and efficient infrastructure usage, and I think those are, those are good things to do, because as we develop our existing properties, redevelop our existing properties and develop new ones, we should be asking, what's, is this an efficient use of valuable land? The county's most valuable resource is the land, so we have to, and what little open land we have left, if we're going to develop it, we should make sure it's going to be productive and contribute to the community, not just as a place, but also financially, that it can sustain its own infrastructure that supports it from the county. The streamlined zoning code, I think that's great. I'd love to see small developers be more enabled to develop in our county rather than larger developers. You can have a good mix, I think, gives you the chance for more incremental development rather than giant developments just springing out and bringing a new infrastructure burden to the county for its lifetime maintenance. So if you can do incremental, I think that will be, it's more sustainable, and you can place smaller bets as you grow your, our built places. For efficient, effective and efficient government, I'd love to see more open data. There's a, there's a note in there about data-driven decisions. The county has some open data out there, but I think a lot of it is PDFs. PDFs are not parsable, you can't put those into Excel and crunch numbers. I think there's, we're missing an opportunity for some citizen sciences and analytics to find different insights, and like the SPOST, the SPOST monthly reports, for example, those are just giant PDFs of a table. It came from an Excel table, so I'd love to see that, because I think, anyway, point being, more open data formats, I think county data would, would go a long way for maybe finding insights that we're not thinking of. For housing livability, the ARC did a Cobb housing assessment a few weeks ago. 75% of Cobb's housing is single-family, 16.3% are 10-unit developments and above, and only 7.6% are 2- to 9-housing unit styles. We're missing the middle, the missing middle housing, duplexes, triplexes. And duplexes can be owner-owned, that's historically, pre-World War II, that was, that was the standard. A lot of people would buy a house, split it, and then they'd maybe rent out the other one, that's extra income, or accessory dwelling units. Those are another great way to make more efficient use of homeowners' land. They can rent out that extra unit and get a little extra income over their lifetime, and it gives them another reason to stay, because it's more stable, and they don't have to, you know, worry about tending their large yard if they had one, and maybe they're empty nesters, and they want to, they want to downsize or whatever. So, and then for mobility and transportation, I live in East Cobb, we don't have transit out there, I would love that, I drive.
Sir, excuse me, your time's up.
I want to speak on the housing, on the strategic plan. It's not just about having housing, it's about making sure that the housing that we have is provided to our essential workers, our residents who are on disability, our residents who are working in the public service industry. As we know, these are professions that provide modest incomes, and it's challenging to maintain housing when you're making $15 an hour. And so also, when we talk about renters, I've been renting here in Cobb County for 16 years on Sis Flash Drive, and that is where I found my footing, that is where I started my nonprofit, We Thrive Riverside Rental Association, and that is where we have received multiple grants, Open Winfrey Foundation Grant, Hunger Free America, National Leadership Council, Community Foundation of Atlanta, Youth Service America, Cobb EMC, Georgia Power, Greystone Power, Merck Foundation. In addition, that is where my daughter resided for 15 years, she is now a college graduate, and she just finished her second semester at graduate school with a 4.0 GPS. So when you talk about having communities, thank you very much, thank you. When you talk about having communities, you have to welcome communities. You have the communities that do not mind partnering with people, and you have to make sure that you don't bring in corporate landlords who are bullies, who are greedy, who, who you can pay your rent for 16 years, and then when they decide they don't want you to live there anymore, say, we're not going to renew your lease. So we're going to have to talk about that and make sure that we're embracing the fact that we have people that are in this community who want to partner, who want to continue to thrive, and make sure that the strategic plan includes everyone. Thank you very much.
Good evening, my name's Matt Segal, I live in District One, and I serve on the Transit Advisory Board. Usually I come up here and I always ask for more, more, and more, and more, and more. But today, I want to change it up, and recognize my favorite parts that are included in the strategic plan. Sustainability is mentioned 10 times in the document, and whether it's about sustainable growth, or the county adopting more sustainable policies, that's great and deserves a highlight. Efficiency is also mentioned multiple times in the strategic plan, and that's great as we grow and use our resources in a scalable and sustainable way. Housing is a definite priority of this plan, and that makes sense, because it's definitely one of the biggest issues our county currently faces. I got to mention mobility, there's an entire page dedicated to mobility and transportation, ranging from transit service to safety to reducing travel delays, in which I got to say, the more we get people to travel outside of their car, the better everyone's commutes will be. So overall, I think there's a benefit to transit in all of those goals. My favorite part of the focus on mobility is the mention of aligning our local goals with federal goals. There's a wide range of, wide range of grants available from the IIJA and the IRA that can truly make our county better. And finally, my entire, my favorite part of the entire strategic plan is the mention of data and dashboards throughout. Having these goals and supporting data and metrics be transparent and available publicly will help all stakeholders work together to ensure that we reach these impactful goals collectively. Thank you, and have a great evening.
Good mor, good evening, my name's Craig Harfoot, and I attended the two-day planning session, and everybody's talking like there was so much work done, but I was there two days, and, you know, the most, all those mission statements, that was the work, the rest was them telling you. And the problem with all that is Accenture, as I found out from one of the, is where Arthur Andersen was reborn, and they created all those blackouts in California and all that energy bad stuff, and that's the accounting for. Enron was the real beast, but they enabled it, so they got yanked. And there, you can still see on Netflix, Enron, and if you watch it, you'll understand what's going on today with all the, let's build solar, let's build wind. All they want to do is make energy more expensive, so they can still, you inflate energy, inflate food, you inflate housing, and they just keep printing money. And that debt ceiling thing, they're gotten it so close, the real fallout's by how close they cut it. But Accenture has been doing China for over 30 years. All those planned cities, all those big buildings, all those high-speed rails, China's bankrupt on that train. All that stuff they planned for them has, I've been reading, 20% of the young Chinese are out of work, they're telling them, go back to the farm, grow some. And there was just, I emailed you the piece just now, tonight, so you can see what I'm talking about. It's one of the big accounting people saying this. It's time to, because they're still trying to suck people into buying Chinese stocks and bonds in this country. But anyhow, Accenture, for $1,005,000, you just throw it away, because when the, I've been coming here for a while now, and you know that, and I did it, I told Sam, a year and a half out before 2008 fell, and I don't know if any of you remember that, the chair should, because I think you were there. And that's why I'm telling you, you need to plan. It's going to get bad, there's not going to be money to do wonderful things, but you know what? When the housing goes down this time, I hope you don't give the banks, oh, you don't have to pay the property taxes until you unwind them, because the county never got the money back by 2015, seven years later. I mean, the plan sounds good, transport- Transportation will be needed, but there's private solutions to all this, and it doesn't even need to be in Accenture's plan.
Mr. Harfoot, sorry, your time's up.
Are there any additional speakers? All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, do you have any questions or comments for Jimmy? Yes, go ahead.
Jimmy, just some clarification. You said there's been over 5,000 responses. Is that 5,000 new responses, or is that essentially 1,300 from the original 3,700 we had?
Since the beginning, there's been that many.
Since the beginning, okay, okay. And then, second of all, is the county looking at this being a policy or just a guideline?
That will be up to the Board of Commissioners.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? And it's my understanding that this does guide our board. Any board has the ability to determine how they implement this, but this is an opportunity for the board and staff to be on the same page as to how we address issues in our county. But every decision we make continues to be made on a case-by-case basis. I believe what we're hoping is that as we're making decisions in the future, that we can tie it back to the plan so we can see how we are all moving together on the same page.
Yes, ma'am. And just a point of clarification, I heard one of the speakers say that we should post it on our website. It has been on the website now for the last month or so.
Okay.
Along with a link that allows a person reading the proposed strategic plan to enter into an email, and then we are putting all those comments together. So it is on the main page of the Cobb County website right now.
Okay. Go ahead.
Jimmy, just a comment. I took it that because of the public input that is being given, if we do any changes, that the changes be clearly put on the county website.
Oh, okay.
That's how I took it. I'm not sure if that's how she-- But to me, yes, we all know it's on there, but it's if we do any changes before it comes back to the board, that those changes are clearly shown on the website.
All right, thank you.
Jimmy, I'm sorry, we have another question.
Yeah, just, thank you. So regarding the sourcing of where people, where those responses came from, is that something, is that data that's accessible for us to look at?
As far as--
Meaning, who answered, from what part of the county?
All we will have is email addresses.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Now, a lot of people will put in there, I live in XYZ, but we have their email address. Any other questions?
Thank you, Jimmy. Okay, with that, we are now at our first public comment.
Thank you, Chair One. Excuse me, as the Board provides the podium for public comment, it's appropriate to review the related meeting rules. Please state your name, and if you are speaking on behalf of an organization, all comments should be addressed through the Chair. Public comment is not a dialogue with the Board, but an opportunity for speakers to provide their comments to the Board. The comments should not be impertinent, derogatory, offensive, or slanderous. To that end, the Board encourages, excuse me, regardless of the topic, for the audience to be respectful and courteous to the speakers. Everyone attending this meeting should give others the right to both listen and to be heard by treating others with civility. Statements made during the public comments portion do not necessarily reflect the opinions of the Board or the administration of Cobb County Government. And there is a timer on the podium that keeps track of your time. The first public speaker is Karen Finn.
I'm Karen Finn. I'm a Cobb County citizen in Jerica's District Two. I'm here about the Cobb County rental housing crisis, which impacts me and many women that look like me. I work forty hours a week, but I can't afford my home. Like, it's like, what's the point in even getting up to go to work? I have reached out to you and many agencies for assistance to help me pay my rent, when that shouldn't be the case. I work forty hours, I should be able to afford housing. Shockingly, last year, the landlord, I received help, and the landlord refused to take money from my church. And that was depressing, and that led to me not being able to live there anymore. Housing is too expensive and leads women like me to eviction court. You all have the capabilities to assist us. We are your constituents, and we need a place to live and not the streets or in the hospitals because the apartments aren't taking care of the buildings. So I decided to come up with some suggestions that may help you. You can give these landlords a tax credit, and the stipulation for that is for them to reduce evictions, provide rent according to our income levels, provide habitable housing, and provide safe housing. And you can add whatever else you like to this list, but this would be a great start. And we need your help here in Cobb County. Thank you.
Monica Delancey.
Monica Delancey, Riverside Community, District Four, Mapleton. As I listened to Dr. Clausman speak about COVID being no more of an issue, it was kind of bittersweet because that's pretty much what kept people housed for the last three years, was COVID. That's what provided the rental assistance, was COVID. The ARPA funds were COVID, okay? And just last week, I know I saw the news that Cobbly Gray says that the numbers for eviction court are reaching more than what it was before the pandemic. On Thursdays and Fridays, eviction court takes place at Cobb County magistrate court, and you see majority Black families, mostly Black women with children, in the room. And this is a public health crisis, okay? When you're talking about the ones that actually make it to eviction court, not the ones who leave before because they don't understand what that means when they say you have to file your answer. They don't understand that when you go to court, you may be allowed more time. So they just leave. They go pack up and say they're going to go live with family, where the family really don't want them there, so they end up in their car, if they have a car. Or they try to get to the shelter, and then Musministry's telling them they only have thirty days. What can you do in thirty days? So yes, COVID is gone, but the crisis is still here. Just last week, a lady called me and said that she receives the Section Eight voucher, but the apartment complex is under abatement. That means that the apartment is too far to be repaired, so therefore, Section Eight's not going to pay anymore, all right? But yet, the apartment complex sends her an invoice or statement saying that she has to pay the rent. So my question is, if Section Eight's not going to pay it, why should she have to pay it? If they're saying that it's not habitable for them to pay, why should she have to pay it? Can the law protect this person? If she shows the paperwork from the Cobb County Mayor Housing Authority says that "We're not going to pay anymore," you're going to have to move because your apartment's uninhabitable. But yet, this apartment, same apartment complex, when they don't receive the funds, they're going to file eviction on this tenant because this tenant is not paying. So I'm not an attorney, but I'm not a judge either, but definitely, if, again, if Mayor Housing Authority says they cannot pay because uninhabitable, why should this tenant pay? And then we're talking about outperformance of schools. As I've been doing this research for sixteen years, most of the schools that are suffering are in the South Cobb area, and this is where we have a high rate of apartment complexes that are blighted. And the only reason why they still can rent is because they provide a door with no holes in it and a window with no holes. So yes, that means they still can rent their units. If they want to charge 500, 1,000, 1,500, yes, they would do that. When they see those rapid rehousing vouchers that these gateway centers or Musministry pass out, and they know they're going to get a deposit, and they know they're going to get six months' rent, yes, these same blighted communities will take those tenants, and in that seventh month, when they can't pay anymore, they're in the Cobb County magistrate court filing eviction. So somebody's going to have to have a conversation with these agencies, with these corporate landlords, and say, "We have to stop this." Because obviously, what you're doing is, you're benefiting for six months, but then in that seventh month, you don't care no more about these families. We want to make sure that we are not providing Band-Aid fixes. We want to make sure that this is a partnership to keep people housed. And also, we want to make sure that these corporate landlord investors are not bullying people, threatening people, intimidating them, and thinking that because they can refuse your rent, that's justification of saying that we don't want renters advocacy. No, we want renters advocacy. So yes, we will show up in court, and we're going to ask everybody to show up in court because Cobb County, if you allow for these corporate landlords to bully people, intimidate people, people are going to be so afraid to even speak up, not only at home, but in the schools. They're going to be intimidated. The children are going to go and say, "No, Mama can't say this thing because guess what? Last time she said something, the landlord told us we had to move." No, we're going to stop that. So we're talking about take care of mental health, it comes back to housing. When you're talking about these schools and academic performance, it comes back to housing. When you talk about gain for employment, it comes back to housing. And yes, this is a crisis our Black families are facing here in Cobb County, and we need to do something about it. Thank you very much.
Michael Garza.
I live in District Three. At recent board meetings, multiple residents have made negative comments about studies that outline racial disparities within Cobb County, in particular showcasing differences in graduation rates as well as life expectancy between residents living in some areas compared to others. Last week, the superintendent of Cobb County Schools echoed these comments by boldly claiming that all of our schools provide an excellent education to all of our students. He made sure to enunciate the word "all." He gave cherry-picked examples of valedictorians at South Cobb and Walton to try and make his point. But the idea that a single student at two schools is representative of the entire student population is ridiculous. So let's dive into data at the two schools to see if the educational experience is the same. The graduation rate at Walton is 97%, while it drops to 84% at South Cobb. Math proficiency at Walton is 89%, South Cobb 37%, a difference of 52%. Reading proficiency at Walton is 91%, and South Cobb at 48%, a difference of 43%. Another difference, Walton's student population is 12.3% Black and Latino with only 4% of students qualifying for free or reduced lunch, while South Cobb is 89.3% Black and Latino with 67% of students qualifying for free or reduced lunch. With such a large difference in educational outcomes between the two schools, do any of us really think that those children are receiving the same educational experience? Of course not. We know that graduation rates and reading proficiency are huge indicators of outcomes in life. That is why it was no surprise to many of us that areas with poorer educational outcomes will have lower life expectancy. And unfortunately, those areas are disproportionately Black and Latino, the result of hundreds of years of systemic racism from slavery to Jim Crow, from redlining to the era of mass incarceration. And now, rather than be outraged that we are still dealing with the effects of systemic racism, some in our community are outraged that we have elected officials attempting to do something about it. They are not outraged that our state is one of only a handful not to give additional resources to children living in poverty. They are outraged that those children are going into more inclusive classrooms taught by teachers who have been trained with anti-racist curriculum. They are more outraged at the presence of books in classrooms than semi-automatic guns killing the kids in these classrooms. They listen to politicians try to explain away racial differences with terms like, "This is because those people live in Democratic-run areas." But how does that make sense? Our school board has been run by Republicans forever. Cobb County's government had been run by Republicans until just the last few years. The fact is, you see these differences everywhere, regardless of the party that is in control. Perhaps if they and the politicians they support embrace the concept of critical race theory rather than demonize it, they might gain a better understanding of some of the fundamental issues facing our county, our state, and our country. They would see that embedded racism is responsible for persistent inequalities around things like employment, housing, education, and wealth. Confining racism to isolated acts cannot explain how these inequalities have spanned across multiple generations. By acknowledging the existence of systemic racism, we can be intentional in actions to dismantle it. Racism doesn't persist because people are born racist. It persists because people in positions of power lack the courage to do what is right. But I don't think that is the case with this board. I have confidence that those in power now will take the data we have and pass initiatives that will make a difference in the lives of families in this wonderfully diverse county of ours. For all of you up there, know that a majority of the county supports you in this effort, and we will back you every step of the way. For those of you who wish to resist this change, I support your First Amendment right to come here and voice your dissent for the public record. But if that isn't enough for some of you, I will offer you the same option that you have been giving Commissioner Richardson for the last year. You have the option to just move. Thank you.
Debbie Fisher.
My name is Still Debbie, and I'm still from East Cobb. I do want to follow up after the comments on the strategic plan. I could be wrong, but I believe if you're going to make this a policy, that needs to be stated upfront and very clear because if memory serves, I believe a policy must be passed with a supermajority. So I encourage you, as a board, to get this information out as soon as you can. And I'm assuming that since we've had our second hearing, a vote will be called tonight. Is that accurate? If not, please let us know what you determine. Working with the county staff tells me it is policy and not a guide. So I will also reiterate the need to know where all the surveys came from, from around Cobb. Now I'll get into the work session from this afternoon and the presentations made. United Way and Chrysalis have obviously put a lot of work into what they provided. The thing that amazes me is that other cities and some counties paid to have the same information reported. I believe Brookhaven paid $80,000. I know several people who have done open records requests on the amount of money it cost us and a copy of the agreement between Chairwoman Cupid and the United Way, only to be told there is no contract. We paid nothing. I'm highly surprised with all the amount of time that went into that study, that we paid nothing. And following up on the gentleman who spoke before me, I do want to comment that there is racism. There is racism around the world. Is Cobb County a racist county? I do not believe so. And to continue to hear it, to have a study that indicates throughout that we are racist? No, I do not believe that about Cobb County. I believe we give opportunity to those who take it. I believe in personal accountability. I do not believe the government is responsible for our well-being. I do believe they're responsible for providing services such as roads, water, utilities, and I do believe giving a helping hand here and there. But we also, getting back into the strategic plan, for every grant we take, there's strings attached. The bus transit system right now is held to the routes that we run empty buses on because of the grants we took. That wasn't in the strategic plan, and I don't believe that-- and I don't believe that it was even considered. The Chrysalis report, to me, on many levels is greatly disturbing. I do not believe that they had 76% response from East Cobb and West Cobb. That was highly unlikely. And again, I'm gonna get back to statistics. A percentage is what you make it. If only 10 people responded, that means, I mean, if only 10 people sent in a response, 7 agreed? I find that hard to believe. If you want to push forward your agenda, I believe you owe it to us to give us the truth on what the real numbers were and where these statistics come from. Because the DEI, on the whole, it isn't about diversity, whatever it all is. It's the exact opposite of what we're trying to sell, in my opinion. And I would ask that we get the real numbers on what was said.
Ms. Fisher, I'm sorry, your time's up.
Thank you.
Ms. Rosman.
Hello, Chairwoman, Commissioners. My name is Christine Rosman, and I'm in Marietta, Georgia. I attended the work session today and heard the presentations from ARC and United Way and Chrysalis Lab. And there is a popular jargon, verbiage that they use, narrative, and we hear it all the time. And we hear it from, you know, we hear about the diversity, equity, inclusion, racial equality, climate change, World Health Organization, the robust stakeholder involvement, artificial intelligence. And it's just, it's all the same verbiage. It's all the same, what World Economic Forum uses, what the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation uses. It's what Deloitte uses, it's what Accenture uses, and it's same as Agenda 21, 2030 uses. And so there's nothing, like, original that's coming out of it. It's kind of like prefabbed information, and then they stamp Cobb County on it. And so it's really nothing different than what they are saying to Fulton, or DeKalb, or Henry County, or any of the others, what they should also be doing. There is a... This whole thing with the DEI, it does sound good. It sounds so kumbaya. Diversity, equity, inclusion, it sounds so good. But in reality, it's not. There is division. There is exclusion. There is inciting going on. And so I'm not seeing, like, because frankly, there wasn't actually a whole lot of diversity at the meeting earlier. Because I don't know if there were even, maybe there was one white person, but frankly, which is great. You have a lot of African-American representation, that's great. But don't blame us for being so biased and being racist and not giving any opportunities, when that is not the truth. And you know it's not the truth. And then, for me to say that, I'm like blasphemous if I'm saying that I don't like DEI. Then there's something wrong with me, which is not true. And so, here's the thing too. All this DEI, here it is in the public sector, and you're trying to jam it down our throats. Well, I think everybody kind of knows what happened with Bud Light. When Bud Light decides they're gonna jam their DEI, their woke stuff, their tranny stuff on everybody, and they lost a lot of money. And they lost a lot of respect. They lost market value. They lost their customer base. They've lost basically everything. And, you know, this is, you know, this is somebody that was like a marketing expert that decided to do this, and then you have a company that is like imploding. And so what I'm saying is there are some similarities, because it's the same DEI stuff, that you're trying to say, "Hey, this is the way we're taking Cobb County." Is that reflective on Cobb County? I mean, you're gonna have a lot to answer to if it's not. And I'm not saying all the commissioners are voting on DEI stuff, but it's enough of a majority that are, that is impacting us. And, you know, your echo chamber of what you're getting from Deloitte and Chrysalis Lab and Accenture and all that, and it sounds all good, and you're all on board. You know what? We're not. We are not. And what the ARC is telling you to do all the time, it's not what we want. And we are the taxpayer. We are funding all of this. And if you're chasing after some elusive panacea of DEI nirvana, with our taxpayer money, you're not following your oath and you're practicing fiscal irresponsibility. Thank you.
Mr. Ampkin.
Ery Ampkin, Cobb County resident. I'm gonna read from two publications. The first one is from Judicial Watch and Incorporated publication dated May 2022. What is Critical Race Theory? Critical Race Theory is a philosophy thoroughly grounded in Marxist ideology that asserts that America is, quote, "systemically racist," unquote. What does Critical Race Theory look like? Key words to watch out for when it comes to Critical Race Theory teaching and programs include diversity, equity, and inclusion, DEI. In true Marxist fashion, these words are turned upside down by CRT proponents. Diversity actually means, to them, giving one racial or gender group preference over others. Equity in this context is a Marxist concept and does not mean equality, i.e. equal treatment of all Americans under the law. It means the government, including public schools, the military, and the bureaucracy, must treat individuals unequally according to skin color in order to force equal outcomes. United States Vice President Kamala Harris reflected this core CRT belief when she said, quote, "Equitable treatment means we all end up in the same place." That's outcome. Inclusion, in fact, means exclusion. It often results in programs that lead to pernicious segregation and race quotas. The other publication is a publication by Association for Mature American Citizens, AMAC. The article is entitled "Critical Race Theory: Seven Hard Truths About CRT." First truth, America is about individual equality, not group equity. The ideas behind CRT, i.e. DEI, is that America is just groups defined by skin color. They do not see America as individuals with separate souls, goals, dreams, schemes, skills, hopes, and God-given attributes. Second truth, equal opportunity is not equal outcome. The Constitution, as amended, gives all Americans an equal shot. If we fail to reach perfection, the goal is to keep trying. An equal shot at education, employment, property ownership, returns, and resilience. The goal is equal protection, the right to rise or fail, to succeed, fail and try again, equal under the law. This is the opposite of CRT's, i.e. DEI's guaranteed outcome, materially leveling by groups. The idea behind CRT, i.e. DEI, is concentrating power to equalize outcomes, regardless of who earned what. Returns on hard work and trust in the individual are gone. Third truth, CRT, i.e. DEI, is itself racist. CRT not only assigns all life grievances by one race to another, it suggests black and white citizens with equal education, employment, ideas, industry, and effort cannot attain similar outcomes. Why? Because the principle of merit-based achievement is rejected in favor of reverse racism, easier to hate and blame than love and support. Fourth truth, CRT, i.e. DEI, denies upward mobility. CRT denies the idea that hard work and equal protection succeed. But differently, to believe in CRT, i.e. DEI, you must believe your skin color defines your ability to succeed. If you believe that, you buy into the lie. Fifth truth, CRT, i.e. DEI, immorally pushes intergenerational guilt. It is a fraud, because the way, the only way to justify putting one race down for another and openly teaching resentment is to pin the past on the present. The premise is wrong. Intentionally infliction of intergenerational guilt, making successes responsible for ancestors, is fundamentally immoral. Morality centers on individual accountability, not accountability for distance progenitors. Sixth truth, CRT, i.e. DEI, empowers elites to persecute. Every Marxist country in the world, every country that has ever picked a racial, ethnic, religious, or economic group to blame for society's ills, has done so by empowering the elite to push mass persecution. That is not America, but where CRT, i.e. DEI, leads. Seventh truth, CRT ignores data. Perhaps the biggest lie in CRT, i.e. DEI, is that America is racist. No country in the world attracts more minorities than America. We are the magnet with the largest immigration population in the world. Forty million Americans born elsewhere, most minorities, many Africans. In the end, CRT, i.e. DEI, is Marxism, pushing resentment, blame, guilt, fear, silence, and compliance.
Ms. Ampkin.
Do not buy it. Americans sleep by values, not skin color. Critical Race Theory is junk, a disgrace, unquote.
That was the last public speaker for the first section.
Thank you, appreciate that. Let's go ahead and take a five-minute break. Hey, welcome back to our Board of Commissioners meeting. We are at our consent agenda. The items on the consent agenda have scrolled on the screen prior to the meeting, and will do so following the meeting. And we vote on the items on the consent agenda in bank. With that, Commissioners, I move that we approve our consent agenda as it has been revised and to authorize execution of the necessary documents by the appropriate county personnel. Second, is there any discussion? Call the question. The motion carries 4-0. We are now at our regular agenda, and we'll begin with transportation.
Good evening, Chairwoman, Commissioners. DOT has 12 items for your consideration this evening. Our first item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve Change Order Number 1 Final to the Contract with D&amp;H Construction Company, Incorporated, savings of the project in the amount of $58,268.45 for drainage system repairs on Bracken Court, Project #B2209, authorize the corresponding budget transactions, and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
So moved. Second? Any discussion? Call the question. The motion carries 4-0.
Thank you. Our next item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve Change Order Number 1 Final to the Contract with Butch Thompson Enterprises, Incorporated, savings of the project in the amount of $48,398.60 for drainage system repairs on Stonewall Drive, Project #B2233, authorize payment in the amount of $33,090.12 to WCV Point CH LLC for the return of excess cost share contribution, authorize the corresponding budget transactions. Authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Richardson.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Call the question. The motion carries four zero.
Thank you. Our next item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve change order number one final to the project number B twenty-two forty-seven to the twenty-twenty-one Countywide Unit Price Contract with Chaffield Contracting Incorporated, a savings to the project in the amount of one hundred and twenty-eight thousand, nine hundred and thirty dollars and eighty-five cents for emergency drainage repairs on Valley Reserve Court. Authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Gamble.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Call the question. The motion carries four zero.
Thank you. Our next item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve change order number one final to the contract with Exceller Construction LLC, a savings to the project in the amount of twenty-two thousand, fifty-seven dollars and twenty-three cents for drainage system repairs on Al Creek Drive, project number B twenty-two seventy-three. Authorize the corresponding budget transaction and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Gamble.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Call the question. The motion carries four zero.
Thank you. Our next item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve change order number two final to the contract with Butch Thompson Enterprises Incorporated, a savings to the project in the amount of one hundred and ten thousand, three hundred and sixty-three dollars and one cents for drainage system repairs on Mountain Creek Drive, project number D twenty-eight fifty-seven. Authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Richardson.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Call the question. The motion carries four zero.
Thank you. Our next item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve change order number two final to the contract with Exceller Construction LLC, a savings to the project in the amount of forty-seven thousand, nine hundred and thirty-six dollars and sixty-four cents for Bell's Ferry Road Sidewalk, project number X twenty-seven forty-eight. Authorize the corresponding budget transaction and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the next, the necessary documents.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the question. The motion carries four zero.
Thank you. Our next item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve change order number one final to the contract with Glosson Enterprises LLC, a savings to the project in the amount of one hundred and seventy-eight thousand, six hundred and sixty-six dollars and five cents for Jim Owens Road Lewis Elementary School, project number X twenty-eight zero one. Authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Gamble.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Call the question. Motion carries four zero.
Thank you. Our next item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve a contract with Glosson Enterprises LLC in an amount not to exceed seven hundred and ninety-five thousand, seven hundred and fifteen dollars and sixty-five cents for Midway Road Sidewalk, project number X twenty-seven oh seven. Authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents. Excuse me.
It's all good. Commissioner Gamble.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Call the question. The motion carries four zero.
Thank you. Four remaining. Our next item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve a contract with Omshipp Construction LLC in an amount not to exceed six hundred and sixty-four thousand, eight hundred and eighty-nine dollars and fifty-five cents for Powder Springs Marietta Street at Brownsville Road Traffic Signal, project number B twenty-five fifty-three. Authorize the corresponding budget transaction and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Sheffield.
So moved. Second. Is there any discussion? Call the question. The motion carries four zero.
Thank you. Our next item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve project number B twenty-three zero five, task order number one, to the twenty-twenty-two master task order contract with Gresham Smith in an amount not to exceed one hundred and three thousand, four hundred and forty-one dollars for engineering design of Church Road, Plank Atkinson Road at North Church Lane. Authorize the corresponding budget transaction and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Richardson.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Call the question. The motion carries four zero.
Thank you. Our next item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve project number B twenty-seven thirty-one, task order number one, to the twenty-twenty-two master task order contract with American Engineers Incorporated in an amount not to exceed one hundred and fifty-nine thousand, five hundred and thirty dollars for engineering design of Barnes Mill Road Sidewalk. Authorize the corresponding budget transaction and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the question. The motion carries four zero.
Thank you. And our final item tonight is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve an intergovernmental agreement with the Cobb County Board of Education for the donation of right-of-way and temporary construction easement on attractive land identified as parcel number two for Sewell Mill Road Sidewalk, project number X twenty-seven thirty-one. Authorize the acceptance of the donation of required right-of-way for said project and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Richardson.
Big project, so moved. Second.
Any discussion? Call the question. The motion carries four zero. Thank you, Chairwoman.
Thank you.
We are now at our Support Services tab.
Good evening, Chairwoman Commissioners and County Manager. Our item this evening is a joint item between Information Services and Communications to request the Board of Commissioners authorize the Purchasing Director to purchase a five-year software subscription for Sprout Social from S H I International Corporation under provisions of an Omnia Partners IT Solutions contract in an amount not to exceed one hundred and seventy-one thousand, four hundred and forty dollars. Authorize the effective date of the contract beginning May thirty-first, twenty-twenty-three through May thirtieth, twenty-twenty-eight, twenty-sixteen, Sploss Project X zero zero two zero, and authorize the corresponding budget transactions.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Call the question. The motion carries four zero.
Thank you.
We are now at our second public comment.
Yes, Chairwoman. Angela Nguyen. Understood that she might have left. The next speaker is Craig Harfoot.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name's Craig Harfoot. Like I said in the past, I moved to Atlanta in the seventies. Eventually, I got a job with the state and I got, was a food stamp eligibility worker. So I studied. The whole thing about that is you got everybody's bills, what they paid for rent, and you determined how many food stamps they would get. So the whole thing was an affordability thing. So housing was way more affordable in the seventies than it is now. I mean, and we, there were huge public housing projects in Atlanta, but they decided when they're going to do the Olympics, they're going to tear them all down. That's why we got, everybody moved out. Clayton County, South Cobb County, all up-down Memorial Highway. The whole thing just pushed them out of Atlanta. But the one thing that, when I ran for office way back then, I understood completely is the denser you get, the higher the taxes go, and the more unaffordable it is for everybody. So in the glory days of Chairman Olins, you know, they were passing this and passing that and tearing down Marietta Housing Authority buildings and Winter Group was over there building it. And when the thing hit, all they had were weeded up lots and some roads and some pipes in the ground. It took forever to get out of that. And what I'm saying is, if you would just keep your powder dry, keep whatever money you had for a windfall off all this raising the assessments, you shouldn't have done that if you're worried about affordability because you're going to squeeze out a bunch of people quicker than ever because the people writing the loans back then, they were just, they're making them happen, like they always make them happen, like they do on the car loans. And people, as they get squeezed on the energy, as they get squeezed on the food, and they just jacked up the utility rates, you know that, it's going to all do this again. In China, what I was trying to say is that they were all saying, oh, they're going to have eight percent GDP, but uh-uh, they're already knowing it's less and it's hard to get information out of China, but they know they're pretty much twisting in the wind. And they build all these big projects we wish we could have built, but guess what? They can't afford them either. And we never used MARTA that, you know, Atlanta, Fulton County, I used to live there, so basically when I say that, it was like, they never built any housing on those lines. I mean, the whole thing is, we just wanted for the airport to the hotels, you know? And anyhow. And then when Sam did Greta, heck, they were giving the tickets away for people to get on those buses to ride in from Gwinnett. You know, these are not sustainable things. But we could have private little bus companies like Ran Between, the MARTA buses on Beaufort Highway. We could, you know, if there is a need, you actually have to have ridership to do this. And that corridor was, you know, highly Hispanic and Korean, you know, the whole thing up Beaufort Highway. Very mixed, very different composition, but used transportation because that was the corridor. And they didn't need any help, but I would say if you want to encourage it, you get, give them a tax discount on the gasoline, you know, get the state to agree to this. Do positive things that don't cost money, that aren't long-term commitments because what's coming, the plan, we need to work together so that when it does happen, we don't give away what the houses, the bank owns that, you know, they got to pay the taxes. You can never give them a holiday on taxes when they start falling down. And the commercial property, that's a whole nother discussion. But I thank you and I hope that you hear what I'm saying because it's...
Mr. Harfoot, time's up.
Are there any additional speakers?
No, ma'am, there is none.
Okay. Commissioners, we have one matter under the Appointment tab. And it's an announcement that Commissioner Burl is being reappointed to the Airport Advisory Board. That now takes us to the Commissioners' Public Address, and we will begin with Commissioner Gamble.
Thank you. Come out and let's walk and talk tomorrow with the Commissioner. You can get outside and enjoy a stroll with me tomorrow at nine-thirty a.m. at Kennesaw Mountain Battlefield. The starting point will be at nine-oh-two Chitum Hill Road in Marietta. We look forward to seeing you there. And next, congratulations, Class of 2023. We are proud to celebrate the extraordinary achievements of the Class of 2023. Congratulations to all of our graduates. I wish you the best on your next adventure. We have ninety-three Cobb County employee graduates to celebrate tonight.
Again, congratulations to the Class of 2023. And Commissioner Burl is not able to be here tonight, so I'd like to share her slides and information with everybody. We wish World War II veteran Charlie Duncan is turning one-hundred-and-four years old on May, and let me make sure I get this right. May twenty-seventh, he will be one-hundred-and-four years old. Happy birthday, Charlie Duncan, and thank you for your service. Also, Cobb County Government Offices will be closed on Monday, May twenty-ninth for Memorial Day. The nation sets aside the day to honor those who died while serving in the U.S. Armed Forces. There will be multiple events in the county during the holiday weekend to honor those who we lost. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Same here, honoring and remembering for Memorial Day. So Monday, May twenty-ninth, you heard Cobb County Offices will be closed, so it's important that we all take the time to remember and honor those that have served and gave the greatest sacrifice for this country. Certainly, many of us have members of our family as well, so please take the time to think of them. From the Office, so we have some things coming up. We've got a, I announced at our last board meeting that I have a new assistant in the Office, so we welcome Megan Powell. And what we have coming up on June eighth, from six to seven, is a Meet the Office event, so this is a chance to meet everyone in the Office and for the community, because then everybody hears these addresses. So please register today, and I stalled that out long enough if you wanted to take a picture of the QR code. So, next. Capstone Internship. So we try to do this every year. Over the summer, we put an open call out to those that are students throughout the county who want to participate in our Capstone Internship. So this is a fantastic opportunity for those seeking to make a real and immediate impact on the community below our efforts that are critical to the Cobb County District Two community and could use someone just like you. And you can find that information on the D two Cobb dot com website. You can actually see the eight projects that we have posted for Capstone. Applications do close May thirty-first, and please get it in there. At this point, we have fifty-four applicants, so well done so far. All right, community updates. Sewell Mill Library and Culture Center will host the Great Create Summer Art Camp starting Monday, June fifth. This will be a multi-week event. Each week features different storytelling genres, which our campers will explore through arts such as sculpting, painting, theater, and more. Whether we're diving under the sea or battling mythic dragons of old, your camper will learn all about the joys of art. Camp registration closes the Friday before each week of camp at twelve p.m. or once full. We highly recommend registering early. Please visit the Sewell Mill Library and Cultural Center website for more information. And Weekend of Music. This weekend will be a weekend of music. The holiday weekend will bring back-to-back concerts at the Mabel House Barnes Amphitheater in Mabelton. On Saturday, May twenty-seventh, it will host an evening of jazz with Boney James and Leila Hathaway. Then Sunday, May twenty-eighth, is an evening of classic soul with Jeffrey Osborne and Pebo Bryson. Both concerts start at seven p.m. with doors opening at six p.m. VIP tables are available and the Mabel House complex is located at fifty-two thirty-nine Floyd, Mabelton. Floyd Road, Mabelton. Call seven-seven-zero-eight-one-nine-seven-seven-six-five for any questions. And kindness cards. Come out and write a kindness card at the East Cobb Library. Create a special kindness card for the residents of the Solana at East Cobb, a senior living community. Card-making stations will be set up in the children and teen areas. It's always good to treat people with kindness intended for ages five and up. And that concludes my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Mental Health Awareness Month is recognized in the United States each May and has been observed every year since nineteen forty-nine. Statistics state that one in every twenty Americans is living with a serious mental health condition like schizophrenia.
like schizophrenia, bipolar disorder, or long-term recurring major depression. Anxiety disorders are the most common mental illness in the United States, affecting more than 19% of the adult population each year. I challenge you to connect with family, friends, or other individuals, and strike up positive dialogue about mental health and let's end the stigma associated with it. Earlier in the evening, the Board of Commissioners presented Takari Tatum with a proclamation for the work that he is doing to bring awareness to mental illness. I would like to congratulate Takari once again on his efforts and encourage him to continue his journey in helping others in bringing mental illness awareness to the surface. To learn about, to learn more about Takari and his efforts, please visit his website The American Legion Post 160 is sponsoring a food giveaway on May 25 and 26 for veterans and family members and others that might be experiencing food insecurity. To reserve a time to pick up food at 100 Legion Drive in Smyrna, contact post160foodpantry@gmail.com Join me, the City of Mabelton's mayor and council members, Keep Cobb Beautiful, Adopt a Mile groups, and other community stakeholders, for our annual district-wide litter cleanup on Saturday, June 3 from 8 a.m. to 12 p.m. at the Walmart parking lot located at 1133 East West Connector in Ostell. We will have a DJ to jumpstart our morning to get us moving. There will be door prizes and light refreshments donated by our Ostell Walmart store. We are still in need of additional volunteers. Please contact didra.watts@cobbcounty.org for more information. And finally, this Memorial Day, we are thankful for those who gave their lives while serving, and we're thinking of those who have lost someone that they love. Thank you for your sacrifice, and I'm wishing you a safe Memorial Day weekend.
Okay. Thank you. On May 31, I'll be featured as a speaker for the East Cobb Civic Association, where I will share insights on what's happening in the county and fostering and preserving the East Cobb community lifestyle and camaraderie. ECCA is a forum of neighborhoods that desire to hear from representatives of government and community organizations on important issues, and it's also a network of homeowners associations that share information on managing their subdivisions. Go to our next slide. May is Asian American Pacific Islander Month, and you have opportunity to celebrate it with a month of great reads. The month recognizes the contributions and influence of Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders to the history, culture, and achievement of the United States. Cobb libraries have curated a book reading list about Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders, and there are books available for all ages. Asking for you to save the date on Juneteenth, which is Monday, June 19 this year, we will be continuing our African-American Policy Forum, which we had last year in February. This event will take place this year in June and again provide a thought-provoking day with engaging panels, inspiring speakers, Cobb County data reports, and community dialogue. Our goal is to foster discussion and explore potential policy initiatives to bring about real change and promote racial justice and equity. We hope that you can take advantage of the incredible opportunity to connect, learn, and contribute to meaningful conversations about shaping a better life for all. Stay tuned for more updates. We will be hosting another State of the County address on Monday, June 12 in partnership with the Cobb Chamber, and that will be a part of its Monday marquee luncheon. And I will be discussing our county's successes and milestones of 2022 and goals moving forward in 2023. In addition to the presentation, Cobb Chamber's Cobb Executive Women will present the 2023 Women of Distinction Awards, and you can visit the Cobb Chamber's website for tickets. Cobb Libraries has reopened registration for free eye exam and glasses for children ages 5 through 18. Last year, we had about 400 kids examined, and 250 glasses were distributed. You can register soon if you'd like to have your child's vision evaluated. I understand the spots fill up quickly. If you would like an appointment, please visit Cobb County Library's webpage. This past week, I had opportunity to join the Metro North Georgia Water Planning District for a retreat where we spoke about solving our region's water problems. And this particular picture here is in southwest Georgia, where we're learning about their efforts to conserve water as they irrigate farms, and how that's helping us with our litigation with neighboring states as we're able to quantify the amount of irrigation that we use for farming and show that our efforts for saving water are actually helping us with the amount of water that we're able to distribute to adjoining states. So let me know and have some appreciation for the impact that's going on across the state and how that impacts Cobb and our water use and how that impacts our relationship again in the region. Last week, Cobb County Police discussed their Connect Cobb initiative, where they talked about the arrest that took place of the Midtown Atlanta shooting and the emphasis that they were able to use with technology to locate the shooter within a relatively short amount of time. And Cobb police say that tracking the suspect showed the importance of real-time information that they received from video feeds across the county. This real-time information is being collected in a hub called the Real-Time Crime Center, and Cobb County Police has started an initiative called Connect Cobb County, where they are looking to not only educate residents about this tool, but to also have residents help in providing information that can feed into our Real-Time Crime Center. You can get more information by visiting Connect Cobb County, excuse me, yes, connectcobbcounty.org, or you can visit the county's YouTube page and watch the press conference. Finally, would like to recognize Memorial Day for those that have lost their life in serving, and this is an opportunity for us to recognize all who are serving our country. Please note that there are a number of events that will be held all throughout the county in observance of this day, and our offices will be closed on Monday, May 29. Thank you all for being part of today's meeting. We had a lot shared, especially for those that joined us at our work session, and I appreciate you sticking with us for our Board of Commissioners meeting this evening. Also, thank you for those that participated in public comment and weighed in on our strategic plan. I believe the Board will be voting on their strategic plans, so you still have opportunity to weigh in by emailing your Commissioners and providing your feedback. With that, thank you, and I hope everyone has a great evening.